And join us in the pledge of allegiance. Set microphone.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, and thank you for attending tonight and welcome. I am not made Major Knack or Mayor Knack. I am Mary Solberg, the council president. Mayor is is not here, so I will be running the meeting in his place. I will, however, retain my right to vote. And so with that, I think I I think with that we'll have roll call.
Look there.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Sommerfeld.
Here.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Of our last meeting. Chad?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thanks, Chad.
All second chance meeting.
Ryland?
Motion.
And that's a second from Ryland. Any comments or questions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Poll same sign. Terries. Item three, public comments. This is a part of the agenda that you can speak for three minutes on anything that is in the agenda for tonight. And if you want to speak, please step up to the podium, turn the mic on and sign in. There should be a sheet there, I would bet. So now would be the time if you have something to say that's on the agenda. Hi, Bob.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Dave told me we had five minutes. I didn't know we had three, so I'm going to be very brief. The last time I think I was here, you guys were passing a resolution to be carbon free by 2050. And we've made significant investments in some of our renewable energy facilities. Cedar Falls is one of them where we have an ongoing project. And we're going to have a project in Menominee here and that we wanted to give you a real brief update on what's going to happen this summer. And also, we're going to be assisting the Wilson Place Museum with updating that Tenergate Plaza area as part of this project. So I've got a couple of experts here with us today, and so I'm going to turn it over to them and then we'll be available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You want to tell them the way to get to the
Oh, if you want to, you can speak during your presentation. Otherwise, we know that you're here and so we'll take all your comments during your presentation.
Okay, I'm Rob Olson. I'm the operations manager for Excel Energy. The Menominee project is one of a number of hydro projects that I have around Wisconsin and in Minnesota as well. I'm going to be very brief because I think Tony's probably got the brunt of the presentation tonight. But the Menominee project dates back a long ways. It actually is a Nappin Stout dam originally. There's been several renditions to that over the years. Ultimately, the powerhouse spillway that you see there today dates back to 1958. That upgrade coincided with raising of the Lake Menomon water level about 10 feet as well. The lake acreage is about 1,400 acres, so a fairly good sized lake. We produce about, we can produce upwards of 5.4 megawatts of power. Probably doesn't mean much to you there, but a megawatt will serve about Give you some feel for that. It's renewable, it's carbon free, and this is a way of reinvesting, continuing to reinvest in our hydro fleet. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anybody else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comments. New business. Presentation from Excel Energy regarding abutment stabilization project. Sorry for the wait.
All right, so you've all seen a good preview. Good evening. My name is Anthony Wacowski and I'm a project manager with Excel Energy. I'm from the Twin Cities head office. However, I manage several construction projects at hydraulic electric facilities here in Wisconsin. Today, I'll give you a brief overview and description of a construction project that we'll be conducting at the Menominee Dam. There's two significant portions of the project. The first one is stabilization of the riverbank. We call it an abutment. This is the sloped area on the riverbank between the dam and the Wilson House. The second part of the project is the rehabilitation of the historic Tenergate Lookout Plaza, which is in a triangular piece of property in between the Wilson House and the bank of the river. So when the dam was built in 1958, that riverbank was stabilized using a series of grout bags that were stacked along the bank. And since 1958, the weather, the rain, the snow and the ice have deteriorated that bank and it's now showing visible erosion. So our project is to stabilize that bank using some modern construction techniques, which I'll show you in the next slide. The other part of the project, the Tenergate Plaza, we've been working with the Wilson House to revitalize that area. And the project will include replacement of the existing wooden Tenergate with a steel Tenergate. We will replace the existing fence for the overlooking the embankment with a steel fence. And we will install information signage that describes the history of Excel Energy, the dam, and in particular, the history of the Tenergate, which was invented right here in Dunn County by Mr. Tanner. And since the gate was invented in the 1880s, it has been applied to thousands and thousands of hydroelectric facilities across the world. And they're installed at the Menominee Dam today. So we'll give people a chance to see the history of the county, of Mr. Tanner, and they can see the gates in action. Okay, next slide, please. So just a quick update. This facility is regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or FERC. We have received design approval for that. And we will construct this work in accordance with the FERC approved designs and the FERC quality control for our construction activities. We've applied to the Wisconsin State Department DNR. And that permit is currently under review because we will be doing some work on a barge in the river, right adjacent to the dam. So we need a DNR permit for that. And we have applied for the city permit for right of way. And I owe Dave a couple more documents to complete that and I'll be getting those in the next two or three weeks, Dave. Just a quick description of what we're doing. We will cover the existing landscape with a concrete material that we call shotcrete. It's applied on a spray-on system on the existing ground. And it's anchored into place using soil nails, which are drilled into the native bedrock to hold that new covering in place. Couple of things that are really key, and I'm going to end on the key points here for the city. There will be some disruptions. It's going to be a very highly visible project. We're planning to start works as soon as the permits are received in June. Some of the disruptions will be the sidewalk that goes along Highway 25 in front of the plaza and in front of the Wilson House will be closed for the majority of the construction, and that's for the public safety as well as the safety of the construction site. There will be occasional lane closures on Highway 25 near the bridge when we're offloading our equipment and offloading our materials in order to install these nails and concrete on the surface. Of course, we'll be working closely with the city for notification and make sure that there's proper signage during that period of time. There will be a barge located upstream of the dam near and under the bridge to do work on the lower portion of the bank, okay? And that's part of our DNR permit. And then there will be a rather large crane that's sitting in the front yard of the Wilson House that will use to lift all the equipment and the materials down that steep embankment to do the installation. So very highly visible project. We'll have regular communications with Dave and the city engineer's office to ensure that you're informed of the activities. And we're welcome to come back at any time to give updates throughout the summer as the project progresses. So let me pause there and see if there's any questions about this construction project. Yes, sir.
How old is the existing retaining wall and what's the life expectancy of the new work that you're planning?
Yeah, so the existing, we'll call it the embankment, the retaining wall was put in 1958 when the dam was constructed. The new surface, we use a design criteria of 40 years for, we'll call it minimal maintenance. After 40 years, it would probably require some upgrades or maintenance. But this is really the modern technology used for steep embankments. You often will see this along highways or along the edges going into a tunnel. This is the technology we use.
And how long is this project going to take?
So we plan to start in June and we plan to be done by the time winter arrives. So we're targeting end of October, early November.
Is there some work being done at Cedar Falls Dam as well by you folks or? At the Cedar Cedar Falls Dam?
At Cedar Falls, yes, we have a currently ongoing project at Cedar Falls. It's, the project there is much more extensive. It's to replace the entire dam with a new dam. It's a multi-year project. We're currently working there, we'll call on the interior of the dam because the dam at Cedar Falls is hollow. So we're doing reinforcement work under the dam inside. And probably next summer, you would start seeing the work on the exterior of the dam in 2025.
Is that water being diverted or? In some way, I don't see much water coming through there at all, or is it just holding all the water back until it gets completed? Do you mind coming up to the microphone so folks can hear you? Thank you.
Yes, we've been passing, we call it inflow, whatever comes into the Cedar Falls project. We're passing that on a near instantaneous basis. So we had some high water here last spring with the big snow melts. Essentially, we had no place to put it. There's no place to store it, got to release it and let it go down river. And that's the way it'll be through the project. We'll almost instantaneously be passing the inflow at any given time.
Okay, very good, thank you.
With regards to the highly visible project and the updating, is there going to be kind of a quick media update blurb that we can expect on a routine basis that we could send out to our constituents or the city could put on our website? Or is that up to the city to keep everyone in charge? Is there like an Excel? Public facing?
Public relations guy. In general, I'm the project manager responsible for construction. So Bob, I'm happy to give updates as frequently as you like and you can channel that information to the city.
We meet quarterly on a communications basis with regard to the Cedar Falls project and with this project. And so we'll be giving the updates to the city. And if you guys want to put it on the website, that's fine with us. We'll be communicating that way, okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
If I could just add, they've been excellent to work with. I figured if you folks saw a crane sitting in the front yard of Wilson Place and we hadn't talked about it, I figured it would be appropriate to share that.
And that's why I'm asking for the updates because I anticipate lots of comments and questions.
Thank you. Any further questions?
What is the finish of the shotcrete going to be? Is it just, I've seen like rough shotcrete before. It looks like super rough stucco and holds, you know, dirt and debris really well.
It will be a rough surface finish as it's sprayed on. There will be no architecture finish or paint on top of it. We'll keep it the natural concrete color.
Okay. And do you foresee, like, what are the common issues that you have with projects like this? Because I assume this is not your first.
Every project is unique. The keys for me are to have a solid design and we do that internally with Excel, with our design engineering team. And then that goes to our different regulators, right? The DNR, the FERC. So that's kind of a second level of quality control, if you will. Their job is to be responsible for quality control and make sure the work's done safely and with environmental compliance. So engineering wise, we're sitting pretty well. We've hired a contractor called Engineering and Construction Innovations. They're doing the work at Cedar Falls for us. They're well experienced in this type of work and they will be mobilizing as soon as we get our permits in June. So the common issues that we would find is weather, right? Outdoor work, summer storms. If we get a lot of rain and we have high water and we're spilling, right? That may put some limitations on the work. I think here in particular, it's highly visible to the public. Most of our hydro facilities are more remote places. So that's why Dave invited us here to share the information with you. And if you'd like regular updates, we're happy to do that. Contractor safety is always a concern. And we're going to have a crane, you're going to be working on a slope like this. There's a river down below, there's an operating hydro facility, we're going to have people on barges. So we do have a full-time safety engineer on site. And we have a safety consultant from the Excel head office who does weekly audits and inspections. So those are kind of the major concerns I have.
Anything else on your part?
Thank you for inviting us. It's our pleasure.
Of course.
Dave's been a really phenomenal work with and thank you for bringing us in.
Next. Item B, presentation of the 2023 Menominee Fire Department Annual Report.
Thank you, Mary.
Chief Class?
Thank you. Good evening, council. Annual report, everybody should have gotten a copy. Pretty much culmination of the monthly reports that our administrative assistant Terry Reek puts out. And she does a fantastic job. She stays on the officers pretty well to get the information to her so she can get them out as timely as she can between ambulance billing and everything else that she's doing. So I guess we can do it a couple of different ways. Has everybody had a chance to view the report instead of going page by page? I would be interested in answering any questions that council had on anything in the report.
Chad?
Where's the lawnmower in this cover sheet?
The lawnmower? So I would ask that all council members take a drive by fire station number two and see how the lawn looks up there. The guys take great pride in, are you talking about?
American ax lawnmower.
Oh, miracle. I was thinking that you were talking about the lawnmower that we received.
No.
Arpa funded.
American ax.
I don't think this was the one. So different incident altogether. So, yeah. Thanks anyway. Are there any other questions on the information in the report? Lee?
Danny, I think the thing that's impressed me is the number of runs we do in a year. We're pushing 4,000, so.
Correct.
And runs plus
Yep.
A day. And it's, to me, that's just amazing.
Just a little over 10 a day, which is the first time that we've averaged that. In 2000, we added three additional firefighters to our roster, one per shift to put us where we're at now. And it's, we have nine full-time members per shift. And at that time, we were just over 1,900 calls. We've gone 100.4% increase since 2000, when we added our last staffing. So we're extremely busy trying to keep up with fire inspections and call volume. And public education has really picked up. Stop the bleed program we're doing through our community risk reduction officer at the school, in business, extinguisher demonstrations, and you name it. We greatly enjoy going out and doing that, but we're getting stretched really thin on trying to maintain the service that we've been providing, so.
Yes, chief. You've been there for a while now. I guess maybe you could just give us a brief overview of retention concerns you may have and recruitment issues that you maybe foresee being a problem in the future.
Absolutely. So I think everybody, no matter the industry, in 2000 started seeing some issues finding employees and we were no different. Every fire department around here did the same. And we did have to modify the level of training we accepted for applicants. And I was just talking to city staff last week that we are finally starting to see an upturn, excuse me, in the number of applicants that are trained to the level that we would like to see them at where we don't have to send them to school. Where we've got somebody that's on payroll going to school and not really being part of a shift. Now you have to have somebody come in and cover that. We're starting to see a good supply of applicants through the tech school level. As far as retention, we're doing everything we can. The city has been fantastic with what they've done with personal time and allowing employees time off when they need it. We are doing everything, everything we can to as facilities, the ARPA purchases, we just got the exercise equipment that you approved and everything is in. And that is huge. The amount of comments that we've had on that from staff is fantastic, where they can work out on duty, especially if they're there for 72 hours, 96 hours, that they can maintain an exercise regimen without losing that momentum. So we're doing everything that we can to keep people, but sometimes, no matter what we throw at them, it's not going to keep them. I think every business is that way right now, so. Thank you.
Matt?
Oh, yeah, we only have two years of data on the inspections and just kind of look at the total number of inspections performed in 2022 and 2023. It looks like we're down about 600 inspections. Was 2022 kind of an outlier? It's kind of a up year? What's the kind of baseline data from year to year?
So 2022 was the year that Menominee Fire went to an electronic inspections program and we got rid of cardboard paper inspection forms. So most of the data didn't roll forward into our APX inspection program. So we were able to bring that onboard and now everything is done on iPads. And we were able to email immediately to the business owner pictures of stuff that we find. And it has revolutionized our inspections. It's much faster. Along with that, that information, we're able to put into our mobile data computers. So when we're on our way to a call, all we have to do is click on that occupancy and the inspection comes up. All the locations for gas shut off, water shut off, everything is in there. So, yeah, it is, it's fantastic. It truly is.
Anyone else have questions for the chief? Go ahead, Jeff.
I have a grandson that's 11 years old and he couldn't help but notice the basketball hoop on the North Fire Station. And he was wondering if he had come down there on some Saturday afternoon when he's in town visiting us, if he could come down and a couple of the guys would come out and shoot some buckets with them.
Absolutely. We encourage the public. We've had numerous people stop by. It was part of the reason we put it up because there really isn't a hoop close up there. We had a couple of people on the department that wanted to go out and shoot, but a lot more of the local residents. So somebody was doing some dunking out there and bent the rim. So we're going to have to do a little work on the rim, but it wasn't me. But, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Come down and shoot and if the guys are out there, yep, absolutely.
Chief, I promise it was not me. I was busy this last weekend.
So chief, are most of your applicants coming in already as paramedics?
Most of them will be graduating with that by the time we have openings.
Okay.
Yep, we've got a class of roughly eight to 10 right now, just at CVTC. They're going to be graduating with their paramedics. They're going to be available to the area. And that's just CVTC. We've got Northwoods Tech as well and M A T C, so.
Great.
Yeah, it is.
Great. Anybody else have questions for the chief? You can't let them off that easy, you know? Yes. And I like the pictures of all the firefighters, you know, and the paramedics, EMTs. I like the pictures of all of them.
We moved away from many, many pages of text a couple of years ago to pictures because it's tough to sit down and read 35 pages of text. But skimming through some pictures and seeing some of the stuff that we do is neat. And then to bring some questions back is great, so.
It's a very good report.
You thank Terry for that. She, I asked her to be here tonight to present, but she was like
Okay.
So with that, it is National EMS Week this week. So if you get a chance to see any of your first responders, EMTs or paramedics from your area or any of that, you know, thank them for the work they do. So, yes, and thank you, council, for the support that you've given me and the department since I've been in this position. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on to 4C. Proposed ordinance 2024-09, amending Title III, Chapter 23, Mobile Food Establishment Regulations. Possible introduction, possible waiver of the first reading, waiver of the second reading, and possible action. Who's going to take that? Yep.
So before you, we have a proposed ordinance to adjust our mobile food establishment regulations. In our audience, of course, we have Chief Class and we also have Chief Kowieski. And they're the folks that are most impacted by this particular ordinance. Gentlemen, would one of you like to come on up here and explain what the purpose of this ordinance? Don't fight over it, guys. It's okay. We're here for you. So the ordinance is put in place after mobile food trucks became pretty common in the area. I was at an inspection class roughly 10 years ago when this came up with some pretty devastating fires, explosions, injuries and deaths that occurred with unregulated food trucks due to gas lines that were home installed with garden hose. And it was, it was bad. I sent a couple of the videos to David just to show you what can happen. I think one of them was up in Lakeville, Minnesota that damaged 20 houses. It was parked at a gentleman's residence. And, yeah, it was not good. Many of, several of the homes were deemed total losses just because of this food trailer blew up. This is the reason that we had to get something in place. It's nothing huge, but it is a chance for us to take a look at it and make it sure it's safe for the public and those working. So chief, in looking at the proposed ordinance, there is an adjustment in both the dates and then adding penalties for those that do not comply. You mind speaking to that real quick? I think we moved the dates. It's, the June 30th was right in the middle of the food season. Part of the reason that we had done that is so folks didn't have to bring their trailers out in January, February with salty roads. But they can still come in for an inspection prior to the season after the snow has gone. And it's just easier to keep track of that January to end of December, so.
I can take the fees if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
Portion with the fees too. Prior to, we didn't really have any penalties monetary wise associated with this. It's kind of just a, hey, you need to get everything up to date, inspected. Basically, what we could do was tell them they can't operate until they do it. Now we have the enforcement provisions with a forfeiture added on. So if there's repeat violators, don't get inspections, not listening to what they need to do for the permitting process, a citation can be issued to them.
Thank you. Yeah, so we feel that this will allow our inspectors and the fire chief to be able to enforce the ordinance in place.
Yeah, so we feel that this will allow our inspectors and the fire chief to be able to enforce the ordinance in place. Whereas before we were unfortunately getting some pushback from some of the vendors that were applying their trade with the food trucks. And it gives them the ability to not only put a stop to it, but assess that or assign a fine for it. And of course, they can get their day in court. But before it was very difficult for us to make them stop without having a penalty to it. So this will help kind of clean up our ordinance, shore up the times, and then allow us to make sure that those food vendors are operating safely in our city and not jeopardizing lives of their customers or themselves for that matter.
How do our requirements for food trucks compare to surrounding communities? And if, say, somebody has a food truck in Eau Claire and they bring it here, are we requiring them to go through the whole licensing process or is there any? Oh, what is the word? Reciprocity, yes, between communities that have similar licensing so that we're not saying, well, you have to do this in this community and this in this community or jump through all the hoops.
We kind of have reciprocity and we kind of don't. So part of it is if they've had their public health inspection, we will respect that from another county, but they still need to have their inspection done for fire safety and suppression based upon what our ordinance is. So that helps ensure that we have a safe, safe environment here. But if it's already been inspected by health and gentlemen, by the way, correct me if I am wrong or am I misspeaking?
We have worked with the City of Eau Claire and the City of Chippewa. We will honor their inspection as long as it's current because we've got pretty much the same documents and we're looking at the same thing. So.
But just to be clear, it's the inspection will honor. Still do need to come and get a license. So we do have, there are a couple of food trucks that are currently operating that do not have our license. They've been told they have to get our license. They have not. So they do have, they will honor their inspection, honor the Department of Health, but they do have to get an inspect, a permit from us.
Go ahead, Lee.
Sunday after church, I went out to the fairgrounds to the Red Cedar Auto Show. And I think there were three food trucks there. And knowing this was an agenda, I kind of looked and, you know, how do I know if this is one that's legal up the snuff in the city or not? And I'm just wondering if that's something that should be posted or maybe it is and I missed it. But how does the public know that this is kind of an out outlaw operation versus one that's complying?
Yeah, they they actually receive a license permit out of the city clerk's office. And it's in bright pink paper. So they should have it posted somewhere visible to the public within their mobile food truck. And that if the if you see a bright sheet, pink, hot pink paper in there with my signature on it or Carly's signature on it, that means they've got a current license. And you can always ask to see it, too. That's totally your right to do so.
Thank you.
And the other, go ahead, Laura.
I'm just gonna make a motion to introduce ordinance 2024-09, amending Title III, Chapter 23, Mobile Food Establishments.
So Laura, on that one, you don't need a motion for the introduction if you just want.
Oh, yeah, I just want to introduce it. And I would like to make an introduction to waive the first reading.
That work. Okay. We're getting what you're, we're getting what you're. We'll consider that for your introduction and then a motion to waive the first reading.
I will second the motion to waive the first reading.
Just simple majority vote.
All those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. First reading is waived. Motion to waive the second reading.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Ryland? Anyone want a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Cody. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I have one question. So if I was wanting to start a food truck, is there a place on the city website that I can go to find all this information, who to contact, where to go and all this good stuff? So I mean, it's not like we're hiding this stuff from.
Yes. Yep. There's a packet on the forms page where all of the applications are. And it has the packet of information from the fire department and then from my office, too.
So Denny's packet says what you can and can not have inside your trailer or whatever.
Yep, they've got a nice little outline of what's required and, yeah, what the fire department is looking for in terms of safety.
Okay, all those in favor of waiving the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries. Okay, now we're looking for a motion to adopt said ordinance. Okay.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2024-09, amending Title III, Chapter 23, Mobile Food Establishments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
Jeff?
Any discussion?
Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries.
Right.
Well done. Okay. Okay, now. Okay, item D, 4D, Proposed Resolution 2024-14 Regarding WISDNR Urban Forestry Inflation Reduction Act Grant Program Application. Wow.
So mouthful.
Oh, discussion and possible action. Megan?
Yes, that's a lot of words. So this grant application that's in your packet and supporting resolution is for a special offering of the DNR's Urban Forestry Grant Program. They received some federal funds out of the Inflation Reduction Act and is being funneled through the U.S. Forest Service to the states. Wisconsin received $4.8 million and they are going to administer $4 million of this through this grant program. It'll be the only offering of this program and it is only offered to disadvantaged communities in the state. So that includes all tribal lands in the state. And then they use several environmental justice screening tools that the feds have to screen different communities. So a portion of Menominee fell or qualified as a disadvantaged community. There's a map in your packet and it's on the screen. What I would kind of generally say is the downtown and hollid rental area is the area that this project can be in. So any activities on the land have to occur within that geographic boundary to be eligible for these funds. The really awesome part of this is there is no financial match required for these funds. Typically, for urban forestry grants through the state through their regular program, there is a 50% cash match. These programs, this is a really, really unique opportunity and something we wanted to take a part of. So I've been working with the Urban Forestry Board over the last couple of months to get this application put together and develop a project scope. So we're planning to plant over 100 two to three inch caliper boll and burlap trees, which are relatively large trees. They are the same size trees. If you drive by the UW Stout South Hall renovation at the corner of Broadway and 13th Avenue, those are the size trees that we're looking to plant. So they are much larger than our small ball, bare root trees that we plant through our regular forestry program. So looking to have a larger impact more quickly through this project. With that, we're also planning to stake and fence these trees to help improve their probability of survival. And then we're going to put a tree bag on watering bag on each one of these trees to make it more efficient for our street department to water them and for any one of the staff to be able to do that and have that visual cue to water the the tree bags. And then also we're going to do a small outreach component, which is also one of the parameters of the grant is you need to have some outreach to go along with this, these funds. So we're going to develop a flyer that we're going to hand out to households in this neighborhood about the project, about trees, the impact of trees, and how they're going to benefit and mitigate some of the environmental impacts that which they qualified for, which in this area were primarily proximity to highways, traffic noise, air pollution, and underground storage tanks were the the marks that that screened that as a disadvantaged community. So looking at a total project cost of $83,656.20, that's for all the materials, all of the staff time to plant the trees, some grant management time in there and reimbursement for all the equipment used as well. So with that, it's been approved by the Urban Forestry Board at their meeting last week. And also was reviewed by our regional DNR Urban Forestry Specialist as well. So there's a resolution if the council should support this that can be passed tonight. But with that, I'll take any questions.
Megan, did you say the full 81,000 is fully reimbursed?
Yes, yep.
But go ahead, Chad.
I don't think anyways against planting more trees, but how does this reduce inflation?
I'm not sure, but the it's money that was allocated to the U.S. Forest Service that then passes that through to the states and then the state is administering it through their program.
Energy costs are reduced by increased tree coverage because there there's less heat island action.
Wow. Eric?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Inflation Reduction Act Grant Program Application.
Okay. Brown?
I'll second Eric's motion.
Other questions and comments? Megan, I do have one that I just want to say, you know, the kids are kids and they see a tree with a low hanging branch and of course they jump on it and and get it to to break. Is there any way that you can kind of make a cartoon out of being nice to trees?
We can do our best, but yes, we certainly have struggled with vandalism of trees, especially in this proposed project area, hoping that having some fencing and stakes and keeping people a little bit farther back maybe will help. But yes, we can certainly work on.
These are little kids, but they can reach a lower limb and they just, that's just great. Great play.
Big fun.
Yeah. I would appreciate that.
When are we looking to plant these trees? I missed that part.
Yeah, so the application is due June 3rd and there'll be a very quick turnaround. So they will be announcing who is funded in July and then we'll work in August to have a grant agreement because these funds need to be obligated by September for the start of the federal fiscal year. So the project would start September 3rd, I believe, is the the start date and it's a three year grant period. So through September of 2027.
And how far west does that map go? Where's the line? It's kind of hard to see on.
Yeah, so it goes all the way to the western part of the city limits in that specific area. And then down to the southern terminus is 21st Avenue. And then the eastern terminus is 13th Street.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second, so.
One more question. We're planting the trees. Are we taking into consideration like sewer lines that are underneath it?
Yep. So we're working with our city forester. He's been finding locations, not only just the underground pipes, but also looking above ground, so not planting underneath power lines, et cetera, trying to take all of that into consideration for planting sites. Not ash trees. That is also a big, a big part of this grant is planting a variety of species to help offset the possibility of a pest infestation again. So aside from the maple blight of 2040 that I'm predicting, we should be good past that.
The maple blight?
We have a lot of maples. We have about 40% of our urban tree canopy in the city. So the test that comes to get maples at some point will have another round of ash and or elm type devastation, but then past that, we've been planting for many years now, a diverse, diverse species. So we hopefully avoid that.
Very good. Very good.
Well, just one question related to the Inflation Reduction Act. Is there other grant programs or other things that we're looking into to get funding for, like for lead pipe or for solar panels or any other things that will help the city of Menominee as well?
Yeah, so currently we have a couple of energy related grants here, one that's just wrapping up here at City Hall for some efficiency projects with our HVAC system. So that was through the Public Service Commission's Office of Energy and Innovation. So I believe that's a $141,000 grant that we got. So we put on some like variable frequency drives, updated equipment, air handlers, fan coil units, et cetera. That project, the physical installation is done and the programming is done. And now we just have a few wrap up things. We'll be hosting a facility managers meeting here to talk about the project and invite the Public Service Commission in to do a tour of that as well. And then we also currently have a street lighting grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Carbon Reduction Program to replace all of our downtown and tall overhead highway lighting. So that is about $138,000 grant that we currently have.
Gretchen?
So back to the trees with regards to the downtown, I recognize that there are limited spaces to put trees, but that is definitely something that I get comments about all the time with regards to how few trees there are. On Main Street, it's very hard to have trees on, but how few trees there are downtown specifically? And are are any of these allotted for these 100 trees allotted for downtown areas?
So the downtown area is included in the project area. So if there are some planting locations that are feasible for us to put trees, we can put trees in there.
People that have spoken to me would appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passed. Well done, Megan. Very well done. Okay. Paul, you're going to be up. Item E, Proposed Resolution 2024-15 Regarding Sewer Utility 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, Discussion and Possible Action. Paul, welcome.
Thank you. This is a report we do every year. We have to submit it by June 30th and it just looks at the previous year, 2023, how we did, what our loadings were, how our plant performed. It looks at our our bio salas or sludge management program, staffing, operator certification, our financial management and our collection system, which is the sewer collection system. So we had a good report again this year. We've got all As. The only issue we had last year was a little problem with our UV system at startup in May. And we had a violation on the monthly average for E coli, which didn't cost us any points, but that we were waiting on a component for that UV system and it wasn't working as well as it should have been. And it's been working great since then.
Okay.
I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Paul? Seeing I don't see any red lights. I have a question. Thinking of all the expansion that we have done at the sewer plant, have we have we done everything now that we were, that we had promised to do, so to speak?
Well, we we have phase one and phase two are 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 complete. There's a little bit with phase one, just some punchless items, not not very much at all. I mean, with phase two, so that's pretty well wrapped up. I think the next thing we're looking at down the road is some rehab of our final clarifiers. Those were constructed in 1972. And possibly putting covers on them to keep the the sunlight out, to keep the the algae down. We've found that algae is a problem with the filters. So that, you know, at the time of rehabbing those, be a good time to put covers on. That's a couple of few years down the road yet.
Any, okay, Jeff?
Yeah, on your report here on the second page, what is, what is that leachate?
Leachate?
Landfills?
Yeah, that's the the water that seeps down through landfills gets collected on the by the clay liner underneath the landfill that goes to treatment plants.
Oh, okay.
So we have leachate coming from Seven Mile in Eau Claire. And then the ESW landfill west of town, that's been closed and capped. So the amount coming from there is is quite a bit less. And then we we get maybe a load or two a month from a landfill up by Bruce.
a landfill up by Bruce and, uh, I haven't actually seen them now for a few months, so. That's what that is.
Lee?
Yeah, Paul, this is off the, talking about the report with, uh, uh, last week or week before, there was a group of, from Triple Value Learning Retirement went through the, the plant. And, uh, my fairly new neighbor across the street used to run the marsh field, wastewater treatment plant. And then talking to him, he said that it was expressed, we had that problem down there that we didn't meet that going from a 1% to a tenth of a percent by the DNR. And mentioned that, uh, Senna wasn't running chocolate for a week or something like that and the problem went away.
Yeah, that's right.
And that is, is there any follow-up on that?
Yeah, um, the, uh, we, we've struggled with the new phosphorus system, trying different things, different chemical set points, different flow rates, the amount of time a filter is on before it shuts off. And so far, we're working with the, the engineers and the, and the representative from Naxum. And then in May, we noticed our results were pretty, pretty good. We were within compliance in early May. And then we had some meetings with ConAgra and found out that they were about as slow as they can be this time of year. We don't really see it in the testing because they're still processing milk. So their, their loading, their, their phosphorus, their flow didn't really appear to us to have changed. It turns out they do this every year. And, um, so we were thinking, well, let's see what happens when they come back online. And they brought everything back on, on Friday. And today's composite sample, which was started Sunday morning until this morning, 7:00 AM to 7:00 AM. We, we still had a good result at point zero eight nine, I think it was this morning. So I, I guess we're just kind of waiting to see what happens. We do have a, a different chemical we can try that Naxum says should work better than the ferric chloride that we've been using. So we're, we're going to kind of see what happens with the next week or two and we're, we're anticipating maybe switching to that other chemical in, in June.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution. Matt?
A motion to approve resolution 2024-15 Regarding the Sewer Utility 2023 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
That's a second?
I'll second.
Sorry. Cody?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, that is special. Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion? Yeah, um, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries. Okay. Okay. Um, let's see. Oops. F, item F, Appointments to Various Boards and Commissions, Discussion and Possible Action. Um, Eric says he can talk to this, so I'll let him.
Yeah, thank you. So we have a couple of appointments here, both for Plan Commission and then the Tourism Board. For Plan Commission, we have Steve Lindberg, who we, who the mayor has recommended appointment to that board. He is the former administrator for the Red Cedar Mayo here in town and has been actively involved in a variety of boards and commissions through the years. And then on the Tourism Board, I see we have Tammy here in the audience. Thank you for coming, Tammy, from Tourism. Uh, we have, uh, members on there. All of them are repeat members except for Ryan Verden. He would be a new addition. For those of you who do not know Ryan, Ryan is the owner, uh, and brew master for Brewery Nona here in town. So we're, we're hoping that, uh, these members will meet your approval and we can assign them to the board and the commission. Any questions?
Jeff? Laura?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to the various boards and commi, and commissions as presented.
Laura?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Motion and a second approving these appointments? Any other discuss, is, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries. Um, budget.
There you go.
Oh. I'm used to two budget transfers. Yep, we have two budget transfers. They were found at your seats tonight. If you want to take those.
Yeah, I will pass that over to David. David, do you mind speaking on to these two budget transfers that came up this week?
Yeah, the, the first one is, uh, the sludge truck that we use to transfer, uh, liquid waste from the treatment plant out to the, um, facility out on, uh, Badger Drive. They had some issues here, oh, probably two weeks ago, three weeks ago, something like that. And then they had another issue here today. So, uh, we're requesting $6,000 be, uh, transferred from maintenance of premium plant equipment to vehicle repair. Uh, that's the first one. And then the second one is for the, uh, and I spelled aquatics wrong, I apologize. Uh, we did have, as we tried to start the pool up, the main, uh, the drive on the main circulation pump that's used to move water through the filter system, uh, failed, uh, on startup last Thursday. So we got two quotes. Um, we include both of the quotes in the, in the, um, what you have at your tables. Uh, we're requesting, uh, $2,845 be transferred from our natural gas budget, which, um, has kind of righted itself now that we've done the repairs out there last spring. And, and transferred to the contractual repairs, so we can get that work done. So those are the two budget transfers that are on your table today.
Okay, um, we'll take them both at the same time, so I would entertain a motion. Laura?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Uh, the, both budget transfers.
Okay. Sarah, second. Lee?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other, just Chad?
I'm just curious if, so we got a project going over at the O'Connell Water Park, right?
Yes.
Are these, was this part of that?
So we will be replacing this VFD in October, but it, the, the, what we have out there currently doesn't match what they're going to be installing in the fall. We, we got what we felt was, was a pretty good deal here. We just replaced the VFD at well four and it was about 14,000. So we were pretty happy with the $2,800 quote. Uh, it'll start when the pool is shut down for the year, so, uh, August, I don't know, August 15th, August 20th, something like that.
Mitch, what, when? August 18th? Thank you.
Yeah.
Lee?
That, uh, sludge truck, is that, that, uh, is that getting to the end of life or what's the status with that? It seems like, what was it, 14 grand for a transmission? That's kind of pricey and it's, is this a truck that, uh, we'll see on next year's cap or just this, some unusual things happening?
It, it will be in our capital improvement plan here very shortly to, for replacement. We do use it nearly daily to move equipment back and forth. Right now, while, while it's down, we have to, um, we're hiring, uh, Precision, I can't remember the name of the company. Practical Applications is doing the hauling for us and that obviously gets expensive. Um, so we'd like to get this fixed and then probably plan for replacement here in the near future.
Do I have this motion and a second?
We do.
Okay.
We need a roll call.
Okay, do, and any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Mayor's report, um, there won't be one. He didn't tell me what to say, so I can't. Um, communications and miscellaneous business.
I do, if I could.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Couple, couple things you might have noticed, there's was some landscaping work that was done here at City Hall. So one of the things that has come up on our, uh, internal surveys for tenants and just things that we've noticed as employees is that our landscaping work need a little bit of TLC. So we've, we've had some of that done already. We're working on getting quotes to try to be able to fix up the, the entirety of the area. So hopefully, bless you by the way. So hopefully in the next, uh, next couple of council meetings, we'll be able to bring some potential quotes back for you for consideration as to beautify our city hall. Uh, initially, this kind of touches on a little bit on what, uh, Chief Class brought up. So both the Fire Chief and the Police Chief are preparing their requests for proposals. Fire Chief is, uh, getting his request for proposal for a staffing study. That's what he's talking about. What kind of a staff that is needed to continue with service and do projections. Space needs study is to analyze the police department and whether or not they need another facility and what that would look like. And then, uh, lastly, the library is exploring a grant that just recently came out, which would allow for them to receive a potential dollar amount of little over $4 million to enhance the library to try to create better access for broadband and technology. And it can be utilized to really revamp a considerable amount of that library. So City Hall will be working with the library on that particular project and that library board. And they also have a professional grant writer that has agreed to volunteer their time too as well to assist in the project. So more to follow if that grant is, uh, completed. You will see that come before you at a future city council meeting because that one has to be applied for by the city. And so be looking forward to that. So hopefully we'll do that. And then next, uh, Mr. Schofield.
Yeah, uh, we did issue a request for proposals for engineering services for well number nine and water treatment plant number nine. That went out to, I think, six consultants and those are due on June 5th, or sorry, June 7th. So we'll be coming back to either the second meeting in June or the first meeting in July with a recommendation for that contract.
Excellent, thank you. I think we're married. Do you want to, want to talk for a minute? Okay, anybody from council have anything? You missed your opportunity.
Yep. Gretchen, did you want to ask something about the rail commission if someone wanted to sit in for you at the next meeting?
It occurred to me that I just got voted the, uh, secretary treasurer, so I'm going to make it work and attend the meeting.
All right, yes, regarding, congratulations.
Jeez.
There, there are only four of us that potentially could. Note the secretary slash treasurer designation.
Anybody else from council? Have anything to comment? Laura, do you sit on the library board? That's why you were so excited. Wow, okay, very good. That's a big, wow. Okay, uh, moving on then. Claims, it's a very small list. I didn't see a revised one.
Just standard list.
Okay, just a standard list. Ryland?
I'd make a motion to pay the claims list as presented.
Ryland, is there a second? Randy?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we need a roll call vote.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Okay, no licenses, so I'm looking forward to, for a motion to adjourn. Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, anybody want to second that? We can't go, Matt, okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody want to stay here? Okay. Pass. Thank you, everybody. It was a good meeting.